We'll call to order the regular meeting of the solving city council for October 10, 2016. You call the roll, please.
Councilmember Deuce.
Present.
Jamison. Absent. Skid.
Present.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Mayor Richardson.
Uh, here. Uh, councilman hands, would you lead us in the pledge, please? Mr. Deuce.
First time in two years, Jim.
Oh, well, we're gonna catch you up.
The audience, please stand. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
You did pretty good for not being in practice. We'll catch you a couple more times. City man-- oh, a presentation. Uh, you know, we're, uh, we're, we're actually honored to be selected by PG&E and, uh, and Santa, and the, uh, Santa Barbara County Energy Watch Partnership along with, uh, SoCal Gas to be recipients of a grant to, uh, to honor, uh, Energy Awareness Month. And I have a proclamation to read, and I'd like you guys to speak on it after I see reading the proclamation. Okay. A proclamation of the city of solving declaring October 2016 as Energy Awareness Month. Whereas the city of solving is an active member of the Santa Barbara County Energy Watch Partnership, which is a partnership between Santa Barbara County, Pacific Gas and Electric Company, Southern California Gas Company, the cities of Buellton, Guadalupe, Santa Maria, and solving, and implemented by the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce. And whereas the solving Chamber of Commerce has contributed to energy efficiency efforts and outreach to the community. And whereas the citizens and businesses spend substantial amounts of money and resources for energy, and it makes economic sense a good public policy to encourage energy awareness in the city of solving. Whereas individuals should take five minutes to review their daily routine to conserve energy, empower others to take action, and join together to save energy and money. Whereas energy efficient programs enhance our environment by improving air quality, reducing greenhouse gases and other pollutants, and conserving natural resources. And whereas it is vital for communities to import energy efficiency into everyday businesses, practices, and personal lives. And whereas solving seeks to promote innovative methods and advanced technologies in the design and construction of new residential and commercial buildings within the city. And whereas energy efficiency improvements can be realized through wise energy attitudes, behaviors, and organizational decisions. Whereas Energy Awareness Month is a national effort first proclaimed by the White House in October 2010. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of solving that the month of October 2016 is declared to be Energy Awareness Month, to be celebrated by the city, its employees, residents, and businesses throughout the community. I'd like to present this to...
Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the city council. I'm Dave Cross. I'm the program manager for the Energy Watch Partnership for Santa Barbara County. Here with Glenn Morris, who's the president and CEO of the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce, who are the implementers. This has been a terrific program since 2010. We've helped over 300 businesses in northern Santa Barbara County become energy efficient and save on their energy bills. We've also helped municipalities. So, we've helped solving as well as Buellton, Santa Maria, and Guadalupe, and the county of Santa Barbara in their municipal buildings upgrading their energy efficiency, their lighting, and that, that sort of thing. Uh, but we also do outreach to the community, and the mayor talked about the program with the solving Chamber of Commerce. We're proud to be a part of that, to provide that grant to do it, because we want to reach out to all businesses and all residents and let them know that October is Energy Awareness Month. There are many ways that you can save on energy, um, and we'd urge everyone to go to PG&E.com or SoCalGas.com. There's some terrific energy saving tips. But also, uh, the solving Chamber of Commerce has an excellent website where it talks about energy efficiency, uh, talks about work that they're doing in the community and with the municipalities. And so, I want to thank you, Mayor Richardson, for, uh, your involvement with energy efficiency as well, as well as all of the, uh, city council. So, uh, Mr. Morris.
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. Uh, I just wanted to reiterate the partnership that, uh, and the grant in particular that we're working with. Through, uh, the, the funding that we received from the utilities, uh, we've been able to provide a, a grant for $15,000 to the city of solving. Half of that money's being used to support outreach efforts, uh, by the Chamber of Commerce. The other half of that is available to the city, uh, to provide the co-pay, uh, on, on some upgrades to your facilities. So those are, are projects that will generate ongoing savings, uh, for, for the city and your residents, and, and just as importantly, allows you as a, as a municipality to, to demonstrate leadership, uh, to the rest of the community and show, uh, your businesses and your residents what's possible, uh, to do and how they can, can do that. So, we appreciate the, the, um, help we've been getting from your staff and your local chamber in putting that together, uh, in the last couple of weeks, and look forward to implementing that throughout the next month, uh, six, eight weeks as we get all those projects done and the outreach completed, and, um, and we'll probably be back to, to celebrate that with you when we're all finished.
Uh, thank you. I just saw a representative from the solving chamber just arrived. You'd like to come up and speak to this? This, this is the outreach portion that the solving chamber's doing.
I thought you guys were doing all the pledges. Thank you. Thank you very much.
It should be, it should be.
Okay. Um, what the solving chamber is doing is we started an outreach program, which actually kicked off last week, and we are sending out, um, sustainability... I think I'm speaking. I'm sorry. We sent out, um, sustainability programs here for everyone, for our businesses and our residents to go online, fill out our survey. For our survey, you win a free washer dryer with the potential of, you know, for those that put the survey in, if your name is wrong. Um, when you fill out the survey, we're giving away, um, one of these, which is a free, um, solar light for yourself. Um, we've got about 70 surveys in so far, which is good, but we need more, and our businesses, and our businesses have a chance to win $500 for first prize and $250 for second prize. And will we be going door to door with this and a whole package program that we have for them coming up in the next, um, few days? And we've already have radio spots that have been running since Friday afternoon, which you and I did last Friday, and they started running at four o'clock on Friday. So we have a radio spot that each of us are doing that are ten a day to get people to know what we're doing. And we are very grateful to this, um, Energy Watch Partnership of Santa Barbara County and, um, to PG&E and SoCal Gas that are doing this with us, and we are grateful for that. So it's a great partnership that we've done with the chamber, so we'd like everyone to take one of these for your business or go online and fill out our survey. And we've also started a, um, new program, which is an online website, which is solving green, and it tells all about energy efficiency for businesses, residents, and it links to every single page for every business from our Go Green program to our low, our city program that we have here, to, um, SoCal Gas, and the, um, and to the, and to the, back to the Energy Watch, and to PG&E, and what PG&E offers in rebates. And that is our most important thing right now is getting our rebate program out to every business, and we have businesses that are gonna be doing it within our restaurant, um, program that we're starting to deliver on in the next month.
Thank you. I, I just want to comment on, on solving chamber's efforts to put for the outreach. They're really doing a wonderful job. She's got $7,500 to distribute and to make people aware of the energy savings that are available. And the, and just for signing a simple survey that kind of reminds you how to save power, uh, you get a chance to win a washer and a dryer. That's pretty slick. And then businesses in it get a chance to win a $500 cash prize or a $250 cash prize, which is really a good deal. Plus, you get that little LED solar light. So, thanks very much.
We are, we are very grateful to Dave Christensen and to Dave Cross here that are here, that have been with us, and to Glenn that have made this happen for us and for the city, and we're glad to share it with you guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy, too.
I am standing in for city manager Brad Bydro while he is out of town, so I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you. Uh, public communications written or verbal. At this time, please direct comments to the city council regarding consent calendar items or matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. Speakers are limited to five minutes. I have quite a stack here. I'm gonna start with Tracy Farhad with the tourism update.
Let's see, I have a nice mouth voice. Please tell me if you can't hear me, because I'm facing away. I know the microphone is not working at the moment. So Tracy Farhad with the solving conference and visitors bureau, and four-year tourism month eight to the month. We were in Los Angeles. Our publicist was there on behalf of a Visit California media reception. Uh, we met with over 90 media handing out 57, 56 press kits with lots of goodies from around here, um, giving all the good press and giving them our top stories. We also have a couple, uh, familiar sites. Site visits coming. We have 13 tour operators from France who will be here this weekend, as well as a tour operator and a film crew from Denmark this weekend. Uh, we've seen them. We wanted to thank the Hotel Cork, solving restaurant, the Elverhoys, Wandering Dog, Burke Holmes, Olsen's, and Inghobors, as some of our participating businesses that are showing the best of solving for these groups. We bring in a lot of fans, having that site visit, that firsthand, see how we are and what we are makes all the difference in taking it back and getting these, um, travel agents to, um, that solving can bear brochures. We also wanted to announce that we have a new event planning team for our Taste of Solving that is Cultivate Events with Katie Hirschfeld, and in fact, she just finished the Harvest Festival on behalf of the Visitors Association, and we were grateful to, um, have the back cover of their program, um, announcing the city as a great welcome spot. As we look forward to having, uh, Cultivate Events run that event come this next spring, which will be our 25th, our silver anniversary for Taste of Solving. We also are now doing a call for Yule Fest sponsors, so for those who would like to, um, help us sponsor the Santa visits for two solid weekends, the advertising, marketing, as well as performances, et cetera, uh, please contact the CVB, and we'd be happy to put you on our posters and in our ads. Uh, we also wanted to let folks know that the trees will be back, but they're going to be, um, sold by YMCA Youth in Government Program, so we're gonna let them take on that wonderful project, but we look forward to having all those Christmas trees downtown and lit up really nicely. And last but not least, wanted to let you know, um, two things. Last quarter, we had 33,000 visitors at our visitor's center. That was a very good summer. And in fact, we've got a wonderful, um, entry for the Scarecrow Fest. It's the 1911 old thing she made. You may have to go check her out. Um, she's still standing, bless her heart. But what I wanted to really tell you about was that we have a car-free initiative. You may have heard of Santa Barbara Car Free, which is trying to get the business together to say if you can get up to Santa Barbara, if you can get to solving by Amtrak or by bus, then you show your ticket from Amtrak and we will give you, um, discounts, coupons, added value, gifts, et cetera, from participating businesses. We'll be launching that the first week in November when we bring some journalists here to write up from San Diego on Amtrak to write about our new car-free initiative. So, uh, look out for that. And for any businesses who would like to participate in that as well, please contact us at the solving CVB. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Scott Corey.
All right, how we go. All right, Mayor Richardson, council members, thanks for having me. My name is Scott Corey. We're getting feedback. Long as it's good feedback. So I'm the superintendent for the Seninah Valley Union High School District, um, and also a proud member of the solving Chamber of Commerce, and I'm really coming to you this evening as a community partner to express a couple of things. One, thank you for the never-ending support of our high school students and our high school, um, through the city of solving and its businesses, inseparable partners for what we do with Seninah's High School District. And the other is getting the word out about our bond measure, Measure K, that'll be on a very busy November 8 ballot. Um, and not only do we serve the valley's high school students, and we try to do our best with that and think we do a pretty good job, but we are also the largest and most-used community center in the valley. On average, we have 30 different non-school organizations that use our facilities, and we're happy to be that partner with the valley. And these organizations include YMCA Arts Outreach, Cowboys Athletic Teams, and those committees, so we're happy to partner in that way. And we also have the valley's only indoor theater, community pool in the summer. Morris, I was a kid, I was a 1983 grad, I was Seninah's High School, and of course, I'm in a football stadium. So all that we're asking of folks this election is to simply be informed. Our website, SYBpirates.org, has a ton of nonpartisan information, including slideshow, even the narrated version. If you don't like the sound of my voice, don't listen to it. But we would ask that people check out SYBpirates.org, which is Seninah's High School for that slideshow. And so tomorrow evening, we have a well-publicized, we'll hope it's well-attended town hall meeting at Seninah's High School in the library. My state would book for that event. And that will start at six o'clock on campus and hope to see people there. But thanks for the opportunity to share a little bit about this, so we are thankful for the city of solving. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Scott, and Go Pirates, 6-0.
Hope you can be 7-0, wait for local.
You got it.
Sorry. Okay.
Fred Cobel.
Uh, three quick items tonight for public input. The first one is the, uh, the consent calendar item 6C, the solving conference and visitors' bureau crisis communications plan, authored by Lisa Martin, the city clerk. And the reason I called that out is that there was a very good informative, I think it was about on the last page, something called alert, where you put in your zip code to 777-888, and it tells you what's going on with law enforcement, or if there's any other type of alerts that I, as a resident, should be aware of. So I really appreciated that. Uh, on the, uh, on your draft meeting minutes from the last meeting, my second item is associated with that the public input by me for the wastewater treatment plant currently says right now we should bypass CSD's request. And what I really said after listening to the recording is we should buy CSD's capacity back. So I would appreciate that you would make that change in the draft minutes before you approve them tonight. And I sent this to Lisa today, and so she has the details. My last item has to do with, and it was in the, uh, the news hawk dot com newspaper, and it seems like that the lake is stuck at about 7% full. And it, it stays that way over quite a period of time now, maybe three months, four months. And the reason for that is that what is left in the lake is state water and purchased water by the south coasters. There is some evaporation, and of course, the biological opinion feeds the 36 fish downstream Hilton Creek. So, what's left in the lake? The member units, of which ID number one is one of the five, the other four are the south coasters, what's left in the lake for the member units is nothing, zero. So technically, the lake is empty. And somehow, the news media needs to pick up on that. Okay? That's a wrap.
Thank you, Fred. Jeff Paskey.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. This week, we had a 3.4 earthquake. It's just a little one, but you know, other things are coming, and, uh, the SVB is, uh, having meetings. Our staff, executive Tracy Farhad, operations director Brenda Hall, media relations consultant Laura Cath, and volunteer subcommittees from the solving bakery, owner Melissa Redell, Sherry Fitzgerald of the Alice L., Tracy Beard of the solving chamber, and Lisa Martin of your staff and myself have been meeting this past year to develop a crisis plan. A copy of this plan is attached to your agenda pack. The plan does not and cannot replace portions of the city's own emergency plan, but we submit to you tonight to be included in your EMP as an addendum. This shows that the solving CVB recognizes the impact that emergency or crisis can cause our vital tourism industry, and we are ready to support the city efforts with plans of action. We will continue to update the solving CVB plan on quarterly basis as new information becomes available. For instance, the state tourism marketing agency, Visit California, just hosted their first ever statewide tourism crisis communications plan, workshops in LA that Laura Cath attended, and on behalf of the CVB, and is sharing many of the merits and best practices that we can use in our committee. This is, has been incorporated in our quarterly update of the plan in January. There are many different crises. Some are small, some don't get out to the public, but recently, when we had that amber alert which turned into a car coming through solving when we're filming for the food TV, and our board was able to communicate with each other to help prevent things from getting out, and we were ready for it. So together, we can communicate, and I hope we can help with the crisis plan for solving. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Very, it's very good. It's in the consent calendar, and we'll be, uh, looking at that this evening. Karen Waite. This is for the BAR and Candidates Council.
Excuse me, but this isn't working. Um, good evening, council, mayor, city managers, city employees, members of the general public. Karen Waite, solving resident and candidate for solving city council. Um, I just wanted to, uh, just remind you and make you all and the general public aware that we are having, um, a debate for the candidates for city council on Thursday at the Bethania Lutheran Church, and it will be starting first with the chamber mixer at 5:30, and then I believe the debates are starting at 6:30. Is it correct? Okay, 6:30. So I just wanted to make you aware of that, um, in case you weren't, and to just make the general public aware of that also, and hope to see everyone there, and would like to spark some interest in it and, and just get that going in the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Beard. Safe subject, turns out.
We want to welcome everybody from the public that runs as a candidate, because it's very hard to run, and so the Chamber of Commerce and the Bethania Lutheran Church is holding a candidate forum. We are not endorsing any candidate, but we do, would like to see everybody there. Will be a chamber mixer and a meet and greet for our candidates to get around and meet everyone from 5:00 PM until 6:30, and from 6:30 PM until 7:30, it'll be a candidate forum and a Q and A from 7:30 to 8:00. So we'd like to see everyone from the community there, if we could, and join us, and let's help with the next officials on the board up there, okay? So thank you, and thank you, everyone, for running. We appreciate it very much.
Well, thank you for, thank you for providing the forum. I think that's, it's really vital that we have, since we have many candidates running, that, uh, that their positions be well-known. I'm sorry that I won't be able to be there. I'll be out of town on a pre-planned, uh, effort, so, but I, I encourage the community to come to the forum and listen to the candidates that are going to be there. Uh, I expect to see them, two of them, as my fellow, as my coworkers, as I like to say. So I'm encouraging people to go out and to watch the forum.
We are. We have three of the four candidates. Everyone has posed two questions. One of our candidates cannot be there due to the fact he had a prior commitment with his job, um, and we do respect that, that you all have full-time working jobs also and sitting on this position. So we thank everyone for coming and supporting, and we do hope everyone comes out. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Ryan Touson.
Hey, Jim. Can I show the brothers a wedding candidate?
Sure. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Hello, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Ryan Touson, candidate for solving city council. Um, up here today, 'cause on my website, voteTouson.com, it, uh, has a spot where, uh, people can leave feedback. And, uh, one inquiry in particular that stands out to me is regarding the noise extending to late hours and early mornings, uh, from the concrete mixing and stone processing plants. Um, I was just curious if there's, um, uh, well, I guess I noticed there's currently no noise or dust barrier, and I'm wondering if there's anything that works to take care of the current residential problems, um, at the mobile home on the west end of Feuer Drive. Um, and if not, I'm asking what kinds of remedies, if any, would be considered if the parcel adjacent to it would be to, were to be annexed.
Uh, for complaints like that, Ryan, go directly to the city manager.
Okay.
And you can go to the, to the receptionist desk, and they have a, they'll, you can ask to see the city manager, and if he's there, he will see you.
Got it.
Or you, or you can fill out a little form that, uh, about your concerns, and he'll get back to you. He's been really good about that.
That's how I can get the information on that.
Yeah, that's right.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And that's all the public, uh, comments I have right now. I've got a couple more for the correspondents, so, um, next is, uh, council comments and requests. We want to start with you, Mr. Zimmerman.
Just want to start off by thanking all the, uh, solving city staff and employees for all the great work that they do. And I look forward to the forum on, on Thursday. I'm gonna definitely try and make it. The only thing that would hold me back is my wife giving birth. Uh, we're pretty close to the due date here, so we'll see. Um, I attended the annual League of Cities meeting, um, got to meet the mayor of Long Beach, hung out with him for a bit, and some other, uh, the president of the, of the league as well, um, which was interesting. And, oh, uh, this weekend, I played tourists with, uh, my mother and wife and son, and my wife had to use the restroom, and I guess it's pretty bad. I mean, I, that's an understatement. I don't really even want to reiterate what was said. Um, it's pretty extreme, to tell you the truth. And I wanted to see if, you know, there's any way we can either do a cost analysis on weekends, maybe it's three times a day, a janitor comes in, or, or more, if we're already having multiple visits, uh, on the cleaning service for the weekends. And then during the week, we could probably leave as is, I'm guessing. I'm not, I'm not sure. But we should definitely look into that, um, just sanitization-wise and, you know, our image. Other than that, um, let's get on. Other than that, let's get on with it, thank you.
Mr. Skip?
Thank you Mayor Richardson. I'll make a comment in regards to Kachuma Lake. Guess it's kind of hanging in there where it is right now. The big reason it is staying where it is other than evaporation is there is state water going into the lake and that state water is basically getting shipped down to Santa Barbara again, but it's, it goes in and it goes out. There is a little bit, and I still haven't figured out where underflow is coming in from someplace for a little bit and evaporation. But the lake is going down. And for the computer nerds who would like to check it out on a daily basis, the County of Santa Barbara has a rainfall and hydrology website and has list, among it has, it has listed all the reservoirs in the county. And Kachuma is hanging in there about seven point two percent of capacity. But it, as Fred mentioned, it's basically empty for downwater releases and water being shipped to the south coast. We're, at least we're in better shape than Twitchell which has, what was it, it was one acre foot of water in a lake that's supposed to have a hundred ninety-eight thousand. But it is actually a flood control, so that goes up and down. So Kachuma's hanging in there, but it's, we aren't going to be able to get any water out of it unless we have a major wet season this year. That takes from my Kachuma comments. We did have the Harvest Wine Festival over the weekend and I avoid it because I can't really drink wine, because I like wine, it doesn't like me. But it appears that we have very large crowd, a lot of people around town. And hopefully, we did not have any problems where the Sheriff's Department had to take care of anybody. I don't know on that one, I'll be checking the Sheriff's report on that one there. For those people who are looking for some humor in Solvang, as mentioned, the scarecrow contest is out and about. There's a large number of very humorous scarecrows, so go out and vote for the ones you like on that one there. Next item is, I will mention also that I also went to League California Cities. And one of the concurrent sessions I went to was put on by the Rancho Cucamonga Police Department, Sheriff's Department, Fire Department Organization. And they were dealing with active shooters and mass casualty events and how to ensure that all the responders are working on the same page and talking the same terminology. And Sean, this is what I was going to talk to you about, is that I would like to see if we could have Representative of the Sheriff's Department come up and talk to the City of Solvang and possibly a joint session with the City of Buellton. Because like Rancho Cucamonga, they have a hundred and fifty ship, police forces, but they are a contract city with the Sheriff's Department, but it's a hundred and fifty officers, approximately the same number of firefighters for their community. Between Buellton and Solvang, we probably at any time have six to eight fire personnel at the two stations and six to eight sheriff's deputies. And if we ever had some sort of ma- mass casualty event, I would like to have an idea of the Sheriff's overall, you know, response and plan, so the city has kind of an idea of what we're doing. I know when we did have the Amber Alert here several months ago, we had, there was involved with the County Fire Department was involved, the Sheriff's Department was involved, the Highway Patrol was involved and I believe also possible elements from Santa Maria and Long Poak Fire, Police Departments, I can't remember if they were involved, but there were a large number of officers and I just want to make sure that we, everything is coordinated so that all the various organizations are having the same communications, same terminology, so they know what they're doing. So that we have, if we, God forbid, if we ever do have a situation like that, that we will be prepared for in a manner which would eliminate any further casualties. On that one there, so. On the last item is the City Council debates. I am planning to go to it, see if everybody's there. And you mean having your second child is more important than a, you are not a politician. If you're a politician, you go to the debate. Yeah, and the wife, your wife would be there also. But anyway, for everybody in the valley or in the community of Solvang, this is a good chance to go out and see, meet the candidates and see what they're talking about and what they propose and I hope they have a large crowd showing up at it. And that's the balance of my comments today.
Mr. Deuce?
No, thank you. I also want to just reiterate to remind, to beg people to come to the Chamber Mixer and stay for the debate, the meet and greet, the forum, whatever you want to call it. We will probably go ahead and answer questions rather than talk all around them. I'm sure we'll be civil. And I think people that come will really get to know us, so. I hope I'm just not preaching to the choir here, that there are people out there in TV land that are watching that'll show up. Those are my only comments, so thank you.
My comment regards, I received an email recently about an item that tickled my memory, was about our Water Ad hoc Committee. Are they, are they still meeting with ID one regarding the potential merger with our Water Department and ID one? Can we talk about, are we going to, are we going to continue that process?
We can, we can go about starting conversations, we just, there was kind of a lag in direction and what was going on.
I'd like to see, let's get back on track with our discussions with the Water Department. Our Water Department and theirs and also what's going on in the river. I think there were three issues we were talking about. So, as long as you, as long as I can talk this in public comment time, I'll do it, so. That's the only comment.
What I think we need to do is come back up to speed because I don't think we, if we had gotten erection, I forgot it a long time ago.
Shall we put an agenda item on there?
I think it would, I think it would need that, just to make sure that we're all on speed if we're going to do this again.
Would you arrange that please, Arlene? Thank you. Now that's the only comment I have. I did, I did want, actually, I wanted to comment on the wonderful turnout that Rhona Barrett had for the Golden Indian Village fundraiser Saturday night. It was a packed audience, the music was by Harry James Orchestra and it was just a good time had by all, first-class meal, first-class service. And many, many dollars were raised for that, for that facility. She did mention during her talk that, that they had requests for nine hundred applicants to fill up that unit and they, she said they need nine more facilities just like hers to take advantage of all the people in need, all the underprivileged, underserved, adult seniors. Some of us are in that category. That's all, that's all the comments I have. Next is the correspondence received by City Council. We did receive some correspondence regarding, from the Solvang Retailers Association. And we have a representative here from that that'd like to speak and Esco, I'll give you your five minutes. Come forward please.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of City Council. My name is Esco and I own the business on ALSL called Esco Esco and also I'm a resident of Solvang. And we had something very weird, I, you know, thank you for giving me an opportunity to express my little bit disappointment. During the Fourth of July, I displayed some flags from our stores, store. And you know, stick flags and two by five, you know, the, nothing attached to building. Later, we got the warning that they are not legal, we should remove our flags. And I appealed, I was told that I can keep only minimum two, but size of our store, we were allowed to put only four flags. And except during the national holidays like Danish Day. During the Danish Day, we put all the flags again and then we removed except one above the door. And next day immediately, Monday morning, and someone came without introducing himself, without asking our permission, kind of taking forcibly down from the door US flag and kind of throwing to front of our, one of employee. And you know, like you can't, you know, this is the US flag and this is really, you know, something made us very mad. And I'm here to express our concern and the, we would like the city employees and also we get united and we are so far about fifteen downtown business owners. We created an association called Solvang Retailers Association. Our aim to make the shopping better and to contribute to our community better than whatever we are doing right now. And also, I am pledging to Council Members to review the existing code, city code. You know, the, as long as it's not a threat to city public or city health, like stick flags or without attaching to the wall, should be exempt for these restrictions. And there is state and federal law about also not allowing any restriction displaying the US flag. And also, we would like, you know, when city officials or city employees appear, we would like them to introduce themselves. We are customers, maybe they are not in happy mood, but we never know. They just come without talking anything, just they take the paper and they, and this is the, one of the main complaints received from our members. So we deserve to know who are they in advance, rather than just seeing, you know, getting the tickets or summons or notices. So this is, you know, I regret, you know, having this kind of treatment. The US flag taken me down from my door without my permission.
We will follow up on that to find out what the status is.
You know, this was just right away, Monday morning, next day after the
Now that, oh that's
Danish Day, this was hanging above the door and this kind of taken down and, you know, without our permission. It was tear.
It's bunting, not a flag.
Well, it is, you know.
I know.
Banner still is representing the US.
I believe that our compliance officer should come in and introduce himself. Any city employee that does business in the city that meets our merchants or any of the residents of the city should introduce themselves. And I'm surprised that that has happened because they're usually very good about that, so we'll follow up on that.
Please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Waite?
Good evening, I just, I without getting emotional about this, I felt very strongly about what Esco had to say here. Coming from generations of military, starting with the Revolutionary War, I sat on the Board of Architectural Review that day when they made the decision for him to take his American flags down. And I was the dissenting vote that said, I am not going to ask anyone in any area where I might have a say to take down the flag, the United States of America. But what I did suggest is that we review our ordinances regarding the flags. And I know that we do have, you know, rules and regs for the City of Solvang, how many American flags, how many Danish flags that we can have up around businesses. All I am asking is that this be reviewed and looked at. And I mean especially this day and age where we have people that aren't even standing up to salute the flag in very public forms. We have a gentleman who has, who is proud, who has come from another country and is now a US citizen and is proud to put the flag out there and be a member of the United States of America. It just, just killed me to sit and have to listen to us wanting him to take those flags down. And I understand the bunting part of it, it wasn't just the bunting, it was the flags also. So I just felt very strongly about standing up and saying this. And I know I'm very willing to follow the rules, but I think that they should be reexamined under certain circumstances and I don't know exactly when that ordinance was put in place, but I would love to take another look at it, so thank you.
Thank you Karen. Do we want to consider reopening the sign ordinance?
I will agree to that, I would like to make a comment on it, but I'm not going to do so at this point in time. I'll reserve that for when it comes back, but I would like to, I think it needs to be addressed now.
All right.
Now that it's been brought here, it's been landed in our lap so to speak. It's, to me, it's a challenge against the BAR. That's how I'm seeing it and at some later time, I really want to make some comment on this.
You have a comment Roy?
Not yet.
Would you put that as a future agenda item also?
Yes, we can agendaize that for discussion and direction.
Now I'll have a comment because we can bring it back on the agenda, you won't be able to take any action. Because any sign code changes would have to go through the Planning Commission first. And it would be wise to also send them to the BAR, that's been done by tradition when it comes to the sign code. The last two times we've done this and you've ended up with the code that you have, it was through a well-attended and well-stocked committee process. It wasn't a sign code imposed from on high by council or staff. It was a sign code developed by committee, including many members of the community and many members of the business community that helped to put together the sign code. So you can have it on for a discussion item and you can give some general direction. You certainly have to send it to the Planning Commission first and the tradition has been for the BAR to look at the sign code as well.
I was one of the first sign committee ordinance changes when I first came on the council and it's not, it's not a quickly done process. Takes several weeks and months to meet and agree on what the ordinance should be. It's quite a complicated process, so bring it back to the, bring it back to council for an agenda item.
Just a question for City Attorney, we can give direction on what we would like the planning
To look at, yes.
To look at.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you Karen. Approval of the agenda, is there any changes to the agenda? No? Council meeting minutes of September twenty-sixth, are there any additions, corrections, deletions except for the previously amended comment? Can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
So that's a motion to accept the agenda as amended by the comments by Fred Goble. The minutes, yeah, that was what the minute meant, yeah. Did I say agenda? I meant minutes.
Yes. You missed your nap today, didn't you?
Actually, it took a longer one than I wanted to.
Did Jeanette come in and make sure you're still breathing?
Oh actually, she was, she was running around and letting me sleep, that was a wonderful thing. Okay, on with the consent agenda. Is there anybody who wants to pull any of the consent items from the agenda?
I'd like to pull C for, yeah, C, that's the VISIT, the Yeah, I'd like to pull that just for a comment.
Item B?
C.
Oh six C.
Charlie.
Okay, any others?
I have a, I have a request to continue six F, the land development improvement for the Mercantile.
Okay, we can make that a part of the motion. All right, so let's discuss
How about if we just, I make a motion, we accept items A, B, D, and E, table item F at this time and then we can have item C after we have our discussion.
Is, that's a good motion, it's our second. It's been moved in second, it's kind of a roll call please.
Council Member Skip? Councilmember Skid?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes, and that passed with a 401 abstent. Onto item six C, we read that, please. Lisa?
Item six C, receive and file the Solvang Conference and Visitors Bureau Crisis Communication Plan.
Mr. Deuce. Oh, sorry. Staff report.
There should be a quick comment, Jim.
Do you want any changes, just want to comment?
No, I don't want, I don't want to change it, I just, I just wanted to make comment on it.
Okay, just read the title and the recommendation, don't have to go into the background.
The SCVB Crisis Communication Plan Recommendation is to receive and file the Crisis Communication Plan.
Any questions? Mr. Deuce.
A comment on it, I read through it, I like it very much. I think it's important that, that the correct message goes out in case of a crisis. I think back to the refugio oil spill, and the amount of, the amount of stuff that came out of there. And then listening to how bad a hit Santa Barbara took as far as tourists, even though there wasn't a whole lot of oil on their beaches, the crisis, there was no crisis in Santa Barbara, they created it. It's important we get the right story out, and we have an instrument here that I think working with the city staff and the Visitors Bureau, who's really our communication to the outside world, to, to the promotion, and I know, Tracy, you'll put out the right story. Thank you.
Any other comments? Can we have a motion to receive item six C?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, one abstent, 40. Onto item seven.
Item seven, Parking in Luffy Promissory Note for 478 Fourth Place.
He's not here? Then let's, let's, let's move that back to, I'm sorry?
You might just check and see if anybody's representing Quez Arah.
Okay, with that, then let's, let's move that back to, to after item eight, we'll go to item eight next.
Item eight, Professional Services Agreement, Engineering Services for Well 22 Upgrade.
Staff report.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor Richardson and councilmembers, Matt Vanderland and your Public Works Director and City Engineer. And I believe this item was originally intended for the consent agenda, but I believe the city manager wanted the item pulled and put on the regular agenda in case you might have any questions. But I did want to just, by way of background, remind you that this is on, on the agenda in response to staff following the city council direction. Back in May, on the, at the May 9, 2016 city council meeting, the city council directed staff to take a number of actions. At that meeting, what was discussed, well, an update was given on a number of water projects that we're working on, and, and staff requested direction from city council. And for example, the city council directed staff to repair rather than replace Reservoir Two. The city council also directed staff to proceed with well, with the Well 22 upgrades, which this, with, which this item is related to. And city council also directed staff to continue working on our permit amendment with the State Water Resources Control Board regarding our river wells permit, to continue working on that permit amendment. And as soon as that's resolved, then proceed to acquire the necessary easements for new wells along the river. So, we're, we're also progressing with that. Our committee, technical committee, has been meeting between the three agencies, oh, I'm sorry, between the ID One, the city of Solvang, and the Alisal Ranch. And so, we're, we're moving forward with all that. What we've been working on is an operations plan for how we would operate those wells, and that's related to the amendment of our permit with the state. Anyway, so, so we're proceeding with those directions, and so staff is recommending that the city council award a professional services contract to Corolla Engineers in the amount of $93,000 and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement, and then also further authorize the city manager to execute any contract amendments if within a contingency amount of $9,000. So, I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions of the staff report? Neil?
Do you think that the cost for these services are fair?
I do, and I thought that might be a question. The engineering services for the HCA Southwell totaled, ended up totaling $87,000. And so, this well is a little, it's similar, very similar, but it's a little bit different. When we proceeded with the HCA Southwell, we had our full, full water staff, water division staff, and our water division staff were going to design and construct the disinfection facility. So, those are the facilities that add chlorine and ammonia and to create chloramines, which is a disinfectant. But unfortunately, when we got to construction, you're aware, our, our water supervisor had a serious accident, and he's been out, and so the actual implementation of the disinfection facility didn't go as smoothly and as well as it could have. So, for this project, for this contract, since we're short-staffed right now and don't have a water supervisor, we've asked, included in the scope of services, for the consultant to design and prepare the specifications for the disinfection facility. So, that's why, even though they have all the experience and knowledge from the previous well, the disinfection facility is very complicated, and so that's why the cost is slightly higher. But yeah, we feel that these, this fee is very competitive.
All right. Mr. Attorney. It just entered my mind that Well 22 and Well 23 is within 500 feet of my property?
When the question is asked at a meeting without time to, to really analyze the applications, the general advice is caution is better than, than not.
Okay.
I'll just, I'm still going to advise caution in stepping down tonight, but sometimes in situations like this, when the project is going to affect everybody, it's, it's okay to vote. So, if we had time to analyze it carefully, that there might be a different answer off the cuff, if it's within 500 feet, it's always best to step down.
Would it be better for me to step out then and hand the diocese, hand the?
Yes.
Over? I'm going to accuse myself for this item. Give it to the.
I got it, Mr. Mayor. Any more on the staff report, Matt?
No, I was just waiting.
Or you were, you were answering a question.
Correct.
Okay. Any, any other questions? This is, this is a public hearing, I believe, so.
Public comment?
Public comment. And Fred, do you have anything up here?
Up tonight.
Oh, okay. Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for comments. Neil, you want to start down at your end?
I'll just make the motion to accept staff recommendation.
And I'll second it.
Okay, we got a, we got a motion and a second. Lisa, roll call.
Councilmember Zimmerman?
Yes.
Skid?
Yes.
Deuce?
Yes. There we go.
Didn't even have enough time to use the restroom.
Oh, yes, three O with one abstention, got to give the score.
Thank you.
And one absence.
You did a fine job. Pledge of the flag and take over the diocese, that's great.
See how quick I get these guys, Jim?
You're all right. Item seven, do we want to table that?
I recommend that you do. In my last conversation with the applicant, I believe he did want to address council because he had requested a different interest rate from that being recommended by the staff.
All right, so with that.
So, I did, I did hear from him on Thursday, and he was planning to be here, so I will contact him again and see if he can be sure to be here the next one.
So, there's more representing from Quez Arah here, then. Okay, with that, can I have a motion that we table this item until another date?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed, 401, one abstention. Are there any? Any other comments? Well, in that case, then we will adjourn this meeting.
One.
One hour. Hey. Thank you all for attending.